Your next vehicle from Community Motors of Mason City.
Great service from three locations. Community on Monroe, Community Motors Westside, and Mason City Ford. Ten new franchises and hundreds of vehicles to give you more choices. Plus, Community offers an exclusive 3-3 warranty on pre-owned vehicles and 10-year 250,000-mile warranty on new. Need more reasons why? Stop or visit Community Auto Group, that town.
Because nobody beats a Community deal.
We'd like to recognize TJ Jumper this evening because a while back Kathy and I were talking about the possibility of nominating someone for the Outstanding Young Educator Award through the ASCD group. And so Kathy and I put our heads together and we submitted a nomination for TJ Jumper to ASCD and received this information. So I'm really proud of our leadership across the district and it just happens that this one's about TJ tonight. So I received this from ASCD Judy Schultz, who's the Deputy Executive Director and the Selection Committee Chairperson for the Outstanding Young Educator Award. He has been selected as an exemplary nominee for the ASCD Outstanding Young Educator Award. The OYBA Selection Committee appreciates his hard work and creativity as an educator and consequently selected him from a very large pool of applicants to go forward in the selection process. So this is just step one, but to be recognized nationally as an outstanding young educator is really a huge deal and we are so very proud. First order of business is nomination for President of the Board for the next year. I do have secret ballots if you want to do it by mail or otherwise in the past we've nominated those on the table. It's your preference whichever way you'd like to do it. Some nominations are not open.
Nominate Timothy Becker for President. Second.
First and second. I'll raise my hand so I can sign. Timothy is the new president. And you get to take a back over.
I'll take it back over. First order of the new board is to appoint or elect a Vice President and I would like to take this opportunity to nominate Mark Young as Vice President. All of you say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
But I wanted to just make sure I was just quickly clear with who the Leadership and Learning Center is. We are a division of Houghton Mifflin Harcourt. We were acquired by them a few years ago, but we've been a professional development organization for about 15 years. And just kind of a quick visual, we've been pretty much sort of K-12 schools across the United States, but also worldwide. Most of my work has been in the United States. I'm all joking aside, I wanted to just paint a couple examples. One of the things that Leadership and Learning Center did a few years ago was we started doing implementation audits. What they meant was schools bring us in to do a lot of things, but we got brought in to not look if things were working. We got brought in to look if we were actually doing what we said we were going to do, whether it's data teams, FOS science kit, professional learning communities. And what we found was a couple of things. Number one, rarely are schools implementing at a deep level. Number two, when they are implementing at a deep level, it almost didn't matter what you were doing. It worked regardless. So I just want to share with you and give you an idea of the number of schools, the number of students involved in this study, and I'm going to keep this as simple as I can. Level one is 10% of the teachers doing it. So for example, today, when I was coaching the schools, I know that there's a protocol for following the data team process. 10% of the teachers doing it, 50% of the teachers doing it, or 90%. And that's when you took all of our schools combined and what the level of achievement was. And what we simply did was took your Iowa Core results from last year to next year and you see the difference. That was all schools combined. Occasionally, we get the question of, yeah, I think our school's doing pretty well. You know, we've got high levels of achievement. We don't really need to worry about it as much. And that was almost the case. But these will be schools that had approximately 80% achievement. It still mattered.
I bring to you numbers about four times a year, just to kind of give you a snapshot in time. We always take one at the very first day of school. So if you'll take a look at the, remember the early childhood, we have the District ECSE kids and then we have the Head Start. The Head Start kids, of course, are not counted within any of these numbers. We have our four-year-old preschool and as you can see, we have 40 at Hoover. And I believe we have, currently we have 38, but we have a waiting list and we're in the process. I think we've got at least one of those filled. We'll have 40 by the time October 1st comes around. Elementary numbers, as you can see, we are similar to where we were at the end of the school year. If you go clear to the right column, the last day, we're very similar there. Middle school, which is John Adams 7 and 8, down a little bit from where we were at the end of the school year. High school, with regards to the alternative school and Mason City High School, we are down from the first year, our first day last year, but we're ahead of where we were at the end of the school. And then we just give you the total numbers. So this is just a snapshot in time at the very first. It kind of gives us a little view of perhaps what's to come on October 1st.
Stand up, stretch. I suppose I'm only going to stand up and just a little stretch because I will be today scheduled to start the entire school. So my life's a little moment to stand up. And just to let you know that I'm really pleased about where we are and it's now where we feel like. In terms of, we submitted our school strategy and preliminary report on Friday through the Angie meeting room. And so if you need to meet, we'll talk on that and keep the conversation going. The Start Somewhere Walk is not essentially part of the Blue Zone initiative, but we'll encourage our schools to do that. Start Somewhere Walk in October, you know, where they kind of take the kids out and walk around the block and whenever they felt like it was important. You know, they wanted everybody to walk in. That, you know, that's where we're at because we're in that area. So we're in the process. Angie's going to be coming to the building principals and working with them on getting their certification started. So they're going to walk in.
BEM 28 is the 28th agreement between AEA 267 and Four Oaks 18-year-old school.
Dr. Laura Horn is here, Chief of Administration of 267, to kind of tell us about how we got to this point and...
Well, this is a long-sorted story, so I'll give you the edited versions and try to answer any questions you have. This spring, probably mid-April, we were notified by the Department of Education that, and you know, the Department of Education's gone through a share of changes down there. We were basically notified that the four, I guess call it five special schools that we run, as of July 1st, were no longer going to be AEA 267 special schools. And just, you know, you have, well, you had the Learning Center here in Mason City. That's now been moved over to our offices in Clear Lake, so I'll be working with the Clear Lake Board on that issue next week. The Four Oaks here in Mason City, and then we have Brenwood and Lakelaway Shell Rock. We have Castle Hill and Waterloo, and we have River Hills and Cedar Falls. So imagine our surprise to find out that after all these years, 40-some years of running these schools, that they were not in the schools, that they are the purview of the resident district or the host district of what you guys are with the Four Oaks. So we spent quite a bit of time, not really arguing with the DE, basically what we're told is this is a federal determination. We accept that. And if you go back to the history of this, Four Oaks was established, as best as we can tell, somewhere in maybe the late 80s or early 90s in conjunction with the AEA, where the Mason City Board had heard of the special schools that were being run in AEA 7. And so they wondered if something like that could be done to help out the Mason City students and the Mason City School. So at that time, what was AEA 2, said, sure, you know, we can try something like that here. So they established a campus out, you know, on the, what would be the east side of town and have been running it ever since. And I guess the dot-dot-dot is on behalf of the Mason City Schools. That's now the determination. So of course, that created a great deal of thanks. We spent a lot of time with the DE, working in conjunction with them. The first time we could really meet with them was right before Memorial Day, so we really have only had a couple of months of this. And kind of the first idea that emerged was, our concern was, host district. What did that do for you? You know, liability, facilities, all of a sudden opens up, you know, student achievement, all of a sudden it opens up kind of a whole can of worms that we didn't have a lot of time to deal with. So the original intent from the DE was that we would establish kind of a series of consortiums. They thought that, but we talked to Anita and she expressed desire that, you know, if the AEA could continue to run it at least through a transition phase, that's the way that you guys would like to have it happen because there just wasn't really much time to do anything else. So this consortium idea kind of emerged and we spent actually quite a bit of time on that, probably about eight weeks, trying to get consortium agreements done. Spent a lot of time with legal counsel at our expense trying to make that happen. Finally, what we determined, kind of at our insistence, was that this consortium idea didn't serve well for the host district. We didn't think, we thought it opened you up to too much liability. So then very quickly, once we shoved that idea out of the way, then we came up with a contracted idea. So what we're asking you to do, or what we would like you to do, since, you know, we already have the staff hired and, you know, the program's running and own the buildings and all those issues, we're asking to do is contract with us to run the program, to continue to run the program. And then what we'll do is we'll try to facilitate everything for you. I'm not sure yet how this is going to look with the finances. In the past, I mean, these were our schools, viewed as our schools to extent that all the finances ran through our, you know, we were the only AEA with a special ed supplement, for example. You know, we did all the billing, everything ran through us. Well, that's no more. All the billing and stuff will have to run through the Mason City Schools, but if you contract with us, then that's something that we will do for you. We think we can work, say, with Ramona to get everything on SC, on your SES and kind of get that all taken care of. So you would notice really not much difference. We also have offered to contract, you know, anybody who sends a child to Four Oaks, those districts, in order to spread the liability, would need to contract with you, so we would manage those contracts for you. In fact, if you approve tonight, clearly Waterloo and Lakelaway have already approved. If you approve tonight and Clear Lake approves on Monday for the Learning Center, Cedar Falls approves on Thursday, next Thursday, for River Hills. On Friday, our intent is to send out a notification to every school superintendent who sends a child to any one of those five programs. And that notification will say, you know, here are the changes, these are host school programs, the funding and the billing is going to look different, but hopefully the programs will continue to run, you know, as they've been running in the past. By contracting with us tonight, that will give you time to, you know, review the situation, see if you want to make adjustments or changes, see if you want to continue to do this. We allow us to do it. We welcome the scrutiny. We think we do a fantastic job and we think we have for a long time. So we welcome the scrutiny and the oversight and I think that we can stand up for that without too much of a problem. How was that? I don't have notes or anything, I'm just going off of, you know, a long, a long five months of this. Yes, this has been a great...
So we're going to pick up the tab?
No. The cost, the programs will be run revenue neutral. We run them revenue neutral in the sense that it would be inequitable of us to use AEA funds for these programs, you know, when we have 57 other, you know, districts to deal with. So what we'll do, and that's a great question, Scott, so I'll pass you to him now. What I did up is a little kind of a cost of guess of what it would take to run these programs, both special ed and general ed side. And what we would do, Scott, is we would bill off these estimates to the people who send students to these programs for the first three quarters. And then in the fourth quarter, we'd have a reconciliation that covers all costs. So we're not asking for any money from you guys to run these programs, you know, we're just saying we just like to continue to do it. The reason why, our investment is our staff. We have, you know, people who are very fond of out there, you know, working with these kids and, you know, we think they've been doing it for a long time. We think they're very good at it. And this is really a way to honor them. So if you look at the cost, you can see on the top part of it, if you just go to the bolded total special ed cost, we think that per pupil on that would be 27, 426 estimate per year. The general ed cost, in addition to that, we think would be about $2,233. So the total cost of the program would be the combination of those, which would be 29, 759, it looks like. The general ed that people pay, they can mitigate that through a formula and take another 1,600 of that general ed funds and put it back into special ed. So the actual general ed cost to each district will be about 600. We thought that's kind of where the rub would be because in the past, when we billed these programs, we assume, I'm going to go off my assumptions as a, you know, former superintendent, that they were paid totally out of special ed funds. Okay, well, that's what the DE is, and they're right to do so. You know, they're really hammering down on that because the feds are hammering down on them and saying you cannot charge general ed cost to special ed. They're absolutely right. That should not be happening. So we're relieved to have that addressed and dealt with in this meeting. So sorry, Scott, that was a long answer to the question, but you do not bear any cost and we're not asking you for any additional cost for us to run the program from what we did before. You know, you have to help us out with administrative costs, you know, human resources costs, paperwork, those kinds of things, but you've been doing that all along, you know?
So there won't be a big surprise?
No.
You know, because if there's no such thing, it's a big surprise.
No, there is not. As long as we're close, that's a really good question. As long as we're close with our estimates, you know, we try to be as good as we possibly can be.
Yeah, I can understand that.
But in these programs, you know, interesting things can happen, so you've got to bear the cost over the number of kids that are there. So let's say a child comes in and is there only for a week. We try to bill on a daily expense, you know, but that can increase exponentially fairly quickly. So in order to keep revenue neutral, that's why that reconciliation going at the end of the year will have to be, it won't look the same as the first three years. Yeah. Sorry, those are really long. It's complex. I wish I could be more succinct than that.
And I think because there's five districts involved with this and five special schools, I think we'll be able to have a better idea of what, how it's worked after we go through a year and decide, you know, is this really working? What should we do differently perhaps? What can we do differently?
And by contract, we're asking you guys to think the next watershed date for you would be January, you know, to let us know, although we could mutually agree if you need a little bit of an extension. But again, to honor our staff out there, we don't want you in May to say, oh, we'll take over that program, unless you're taking over the staff and the facility and the whole bit. You know, if you decide you're going to absorb the program, we need to know in time so that we can, you know, repurpose that staff or, you know, help them find work or, you know, hopefully if you want to do that, you would turn on hiring because I don't know where you'd find better people than, you know, the ones we have out there. So you wouldn't have like, you know, the hope wouldn't be in May, you would come to us and say, yeah, I'll take the board. You know, that would be pretty tough on us.
Any other questions? If not, motion to approve the 28th agreement. All of you say aye. Any opposed? We have the agreement.
Thank you so much. Thank you for letting me come and talk to you about this.
Thanks for coming.
And that is BEM 29, which is the agreement for integration classroom with AEA 267.
And this is something that's brand new and we're really excited about it. I think Mike worked with this and now it's not in seraphines and because, and here it is. We've talked often about how students have been at Four Oaks. Some students are there as day students only, some students are there as residentially placed students and then they come to us for school during the day. And so one of the things we, and personally, I've experienced in students coming out of residential places, is that all of a sudden they just are dropped into the school without any kind of transition for that student. And if they've been, had difficulties in being in school period, and that's what's caused them to need to have a special school placement or a residential placement to provide some kind of transition programming for students, makes a whole lot of sense. So Mike, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
You know, the kids at the AEA school come from districts all over North Iowa and because of the distance, they just don't know. You know, the kid's making progress, they're in a classroom with, you know, five kids and they're doing great. And so the AEA staff out there are saying, yep, they're ready to go back to public school. And so that's all they had. They go from five kids to back to public school. And what we're trying to do is, is have a short-term place where we can try them out into PE class and integrate them into math class and lunch in the large setting and see how things go before we just say, yep, you go back to Osage. And so it's a way for us to make it a smooth transition for kids. And it serves purpose for the AEA school and the other districts that they serve. And for us in Mason City, it may provide us with an opportunity, a Mason City kid who requires a little bit more support than we're able to offer in our special ed programs that we have. And so we can maybe keep them in our school without having to, you know, send them out to the special school out on the Four Oaks campus. So it's kind of a two-way street. We look at it as a short-term placement for kids, you know, four to six weeks. And if, and our hope is, what we're making decisions to put kids in that room, that they're going to be successful. We've got the supports in place, good teachers and staff, that they're going to be successful and then we're going to get them right back to their resident district. Or if it's not working, we may have to go back out to the special school. So we've got a classroom set up at Lincoln intermediate. And it's really set up to serve even K-6 kids or, and so like we have a second grader in there. Part of the reason why we chose Lincoln was the proximity to Roosevelt, so we can supervise and take that kid over to Roosevelt to have, to go into a math class or go into for science over at Roosevelt and just go right across the parking lot. So that's part of our reasoning for the location at the Lincoln Building. And then typically, the kids in the special school, there's a little more at some of the upper elementary grades or like that was a good fit.
Sometimes there's a need for an administrator right away in that potentially explosive situations. Will there always be an administrator available to deal with that potential?
There are three, three, a highly trained teacher and two, they're professionals in that classroom.
It also our administration.
And they're hard to search.
Everyone say always, Scott, because, you know...
Yeah, you don't, but at the same time, all of a sudden, you know, you've got a conflagration and who's going to make that decision?
When we make a decision to put the kids in the transition room, we're not expecting there's going to be a crisis, but you, stuff happens.
Right. But that's part of knowing whether they're ready or not.
Right.
And it might be, you know, a transition room can also be, when I worked in special schools, when we thought kids were ready to leave Smouse and go into their, their elementary school or their middle school, for some kids it started one hour a day and then they came back. And then it went to two hours a day and they came back. So we had the flexibility with some busing, if the students could try the transition room to do one or two hours a day in the transition room only and then go back. Because it's really based on individual student and whether or not they're ready. If their behaviors are in a place where they are now more in control and have more ability to self-regulate, then they're more likely to be successful in the end. Mike, could you say they already have students in there now? How many are in there now?
You know, I...
Are there three or four?
Three. I think there's three. I think we're looking at two hundred, so...
There's a potential for five.
And there's one already about on the way out, so it's kind of, we're kind of ebb and flow.
And how's it going?
So far, things are good. AEA hired a great teacher. I think that's good staff. Tom Devatini is just an outstanding administrator as far as understanding of special education. So that's a really good fit there, too. And he really, you know, was very willing to kind of take that on a little bit, so I think things are going pretty well so far.
Actually, because it's, Four Oaks is really under our program sector. It's actually serving our students from that other, so that's...
Yeah, this conversation kind of started before all that.
Right.
This was before that.
Throughout the year, we'll have between three and 10 students that are regular ed students that are actually placed at Four Oaks that actually come directly to our building. They do not go to the school that's out there and they don't go to the classroom because they're regular ed kids. They come right to our building. The middle bar is throughout the year, but we only have between three and 10 throughout. Other questions? If not, motion to accept the proposal for the integration classroom. Second. All of you say aye. Any opposed?
What I need is a motion for you to approve. It says, if you look at the first, it says special education balance in current year are negative $295,793.88. And then if you look across, it says a mom of a lawful vote request. And it's that same number, $295,793.88. That's what I need, a motion for you to approve because that's our negative special ed balance. We spend that much more than what we took in for the number of special ed students that we have. Just so that you're aware, we did hire more staff this last year, which makes up the difference. And mostly in, with the level three students, we have a lot of baby students that at IEDPs that require more one-on-one assistance. And Gary and Hal, if you want to add to that, approve.
No, I'm going to say that probably with transportation costs, I have some to...
So that's the motion that I need. And then we also have to have that in the minutes that you approve that. And that's what goes when I do the budget in March and certify in April, that goes on the budget for SBRC, which is School Budget Review Committee. And that you're approving that, that we can go to the taxidermy certified.
If you want to just remind me, just to refresh my memory, the reason we have that balance because we don't get the state funding for special ed, that cost for us to provide those services.
It's the needs of the students or in special education, all of that, you know, that they may give you because of the disabilities that they bring with them and they require and need to provide the services. Right. We get certain funding at each level, like the level three students, you know, so we might get $20,000, but the student might cost us $50,000 if they have one teacher in a couple of areas, which is required by the IEDP. And that's what we're here for is to educate all students. Gary, go.
And I say this every year and I get on my soapbox, in the mid-'70s, when the feds mandated special education, federal government also said they would pay 40% of the cost. We're still waiting for that to happen. As of this year, feds are paying less than 20% of the extra cost of special education and the rest of it then the state is just expected to pick that up. That's why things like this happen. I could talk for a minute.
Do we ever have the trumps? I think we also need to hear the good news of the special ed program that is integrating the students back to regular ed. I mean, I think in nineteen, we had like 70 students and 57 this last year that went from special education services back to regular ed. So I think that's also the positive that we're hoping to do, that we have a lot of exciting things happening here. And I think this with the data teams, that just is going to add to it.
I'm going to co-teach and just increase the integration.
We really moved from special education as a place to special education as a service. And sometimes you don't always need those services and some kids will need those services for the rest of their life. So thanks to the teachers that have been here, so everyone else in the right direction of the, please respect the environment as well.
Question to Hammond's? If not, motion to approve. Second. All of you say aye. Any opposed? Question carries. Title is the transportation, reciprocal older loan transportation agreement, which was also handed out tonight.
Correct. And this is a sample. Each year we are to bring before you for your approval, the reciprocal agreement. Each year we are to bring before you for your approval, the reciprocal agreements that we have with districts that are contingent with us. And so this would be Central Springs, Clear Lake, Red Rockford, Marlboro Rock, and West Fork that connect to our district at some point. So this agreement says that we are going to not go any further than one mile into their district to pick up any student that has opened or rolled in, nor are they to come within, or go beyond one mile into our district if they're going to come into our district and pick up a student. We always, actually, we always touch base with each other with regards to if we're going to go into the district anyway, whether we're going in a half mile or a quarter mile, it really doesn't matter. I always communicate with them, we're picking this student up and this is where it's at, just so that they're aware. But by law, we are to have this agreement, so. Now, some districts are wanting to do two, just so you know. We have never done that. We've, we've just stuck to the one mile, which is, it's the law states. I'm asking for your approval for those districts that are contingent.
Questions? Want you to approve? Second? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agreements have been approved. Thank you, administrators. Leadership and learning.
I just want to give you a quick update on District Title One, in case you get questions or you may not recall some of the changes. Starting this year now, we have Title One math in all three Title One buildings, as well as the Title One reading. We also have expanded special reading services at Jefferson. Jefferson is not a Title One building, although it could qualify. We just don't have the money to stretch to a fourth building. If we weren't required to do the set-asides, because of sign-ups, we would be able to fund it. There is one teacher designated as at-risk, special reading at Jefferson. And she is basically delivering the same push-in, pull-out services as the Title One reading teachers in the three Title One buildings, using the same materials. And at Jefferson, focusing on grades two and three, where the other buildings are focusing on K-four because there are two teachers. We do not have at-risk math at Jefferson, we're not extended to that. But if you get questions or whatever, that's how we're trying to serve Jefferson's expanding reading needs is type with at-risk dollars. So now Newman is being served by one part-time teacher, as opposed to another one of our Title One teachers trapped. So we've eliminated that, and are still serving as is required.
You should also talk about the Four Oaks program again, also.
We have just recently received notification of our Title One allocation for FY13. Part of Title One is called the Title One Part D, which serves neglected and delinquent children. And Four Oaks and Fly's are both, both received allocations. This is the second year now that both of them have received allocations. Four Oaks is quite a large allocation. It is strictly flow-through that we just get to manage. But now the program is under our supervision as well, so we've kind of figured out that. That's it for Title One.
Very good. Thank you. Elementary, have you heard?
I met with pre-K6 administrators last week and we just did a go-around about the start of the year. And across the board, we really feel good about the start of the 2012, 2013 school year. And appreciate, it takes a lot of extra effort from teachers, bus drivers, custodians, and paras, that teaching of expectations and routines and procedures and showing kindergarteners how to get from breakfast to their classroom. And so just appreciate all the extra time that people have taken to get the year started off really well. Couple of our biggest changes, I guess, is the arrival and dismissal time is earlier than it was last year. And we feel like our kids have really adapted really well. They're really ready to go in the morning. And we feel like, you know, last year with that late afternoon, they were kind of dragging a little bit instructions. We feel really good about that. And we feel really good about how efficiently the busing is running. We really praised Lincoln because all the buses are here first lined up and they load all the kids and then they go out to each of the four elementaries from there. And so if there's a hiccup here, it just compounds like a snowball going down, hell, it gets bigger by the time they get to our building. So things are working really well here and the buses are getting there. And we're not having to supervise our kids for long periods of time. We just feel really good about that. So Randy and the staff here at Lincoln really do a nice job. Really good about, one of our other big changes has been our lunch program and working with Laura Jensen. We're transitioning to what she calls offer versus serve. At the old elementaries, they just, kids walked in and there the tray was ready to go. You put your napkin and fork on it and your milk and you were out the door. Now at the elementaries, the kids walk in with an empty tray and they have choices. And we went to like an alternate item, it's a turkey stacker, it's a turkey sandwich shaped on this bread that's shaped like a goldfish. And they can get that or the main item. And then fruits and vegetables, different options for that. And so it's really interesting. I mean, it took a little bit of teaching and learning for kids to figure out those choices, but they're really doing a good job. And what we really like is that kids are taking things they'll eat. We know they're all healthy and good. We're not just throwing it all away. Some of our schools have made transitions to having recess and then lunch. And so there's not that big hurry of, oh, just dump it, I want to go out and play with my friends. So we really feel good about the changes of lunch. The kids are getting their own condiments, so they can add a tomato slice or lettuce. Or I've got a kid who just takes onions just because he likes to eat onions. And so he just puts them on his tray and eats them every day. So lots of choices for kids. They're putting their own syrup on today. So anyway, it's just been a lot of new learning, but it's going really well for kids and we feel good about the changes. We all agree with the philosophy of it. iPads are rolling out into buildings and starting to get into the hands of kids. Our parent-teacher organizations, the PTOs, and the district really partnered to get iPads in the hands of pre-K6 students. And so it's been fun today. It was really the first day at Harding where we've worked out all the procedures for checking them out and making sure all classes and kids and teachers have opportunities to use the iPads, to see them actually with kids. And the comments from some kids were, I've never touched one of these. My mom is going to be so jealous, is what we could say. So that's really exciting to see the different instructional ways that we can use those. So that's going well. The three Title One buildings that are also sign as schools, we did notify all of our parents prior to the start of school with a letter. We offered school choice and right now, very little movement on that end. So we take that as a compliment. They know our schools are doing great things. You know, the tests are just one measure of a good school. So our, each building is working with their leadership teams and their staff. And we're working with the AEA and the Iowa Support Network to write their action plan. And we'll have those ready to go to the Department of Education by November first. So we'll make sure we share the highlights of those in future meetings.
Mike, what are the hours now? You said that you start earlier, is the date?
Eight fifteen is the start and two fifty-five, that would be the elementary. It's a little bit different than the eight ten, or eight oh five and two forty-five here at Lincoln. Breakfast, everything shifted forward?
Yeah.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, secondary report?
Secondary, we've actually also had a very good start. Talking with Gary and Jerry and Dave Settey, couldn't be happier with how the year started. Want to do a quick thank you to buildings and grounds, our custodians, the teaching staff, for all the work they did leading up to school to have the high school transition because the construction goes so well. You know, some of us have been talking, but our only big issue that first week is lunch. That means we've had a pretty, pretty good start when we don't have any of the other major issues come up. So we were pretty excited about that. Now we have lunch figured out as well. Lunch will overlap and then getting all the chairs that we needed and the lunch rooms. So that's been outstanding. Eighth grade, a couple of weeks, actually about a week ago Friday, went down to East Park to see the Civil War reenactment and kind of toured down there. So that was a great learning experience for those eighth grade. And I know seventh grade and eighth grade, but mainly seventh grade, working on the bullying and harassment stuff quite a bit. As you know, this last week, we had many ups and downs over the entire week. And we're glad the last week is over and we're moving forward this week. Because it was, you know, the motions of homecoming and Mr. Wentworth and all that was kind of going on on our campus. And the staff did an amazing job again and kind of bonded together. And so we're looking forward to keeping, keep working on the direction we're heading with data teams, formative assessments. At the secondary level, what we're working on on our full PD days are aligning the rigor of the core to our formative and so-and-of assessments. We aligned last year on the curriculum, now we're working on the assessment piece to kind of go with that. So, oh, the grading policy implementation has gone outstanding with the high school staff. And I know seventh and eighth grader are kind of getting their feet wet with that as well.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
We've got all of these events, I mean, they'd be pulling kids out of school. Would you like the student council, going to Chicago, these kinds of things? Because it'll be the same kids that are missing the same number of classes. And you'll find that I'm rather a curmudgeon there.
Yes, I, yes, we've talked about this.
Yes, we have.
You and I have talked about this. Actually, this was the first I had heard about the Chicago event, so I don't even know when the dates are. So I need to look into that. Usually the Ames event, we don't take all the students. I think last year there was only eight that went, five to eight that went. So there won't be the whole students in it that goes, it'll be a select group. And usually, I think the Ames event, was it last year that we sent the younger?
Yeah, it was when we sent the, and actually we'll, to find that.
So, so I know about the Ames event, but last year we took some with, it was over the weekend mainly. It was a Friday, Saturday, Sunday for the Chicago event last year, but I haven't seen that one yet.
I trust you'll have sufficient share of homes if these kids go to Las Vegas.
Yes. Yeah. Actually, that was the first I had heard about that too.
You didn't know that?
Yes. Oh, and the parking, and Kayla didn't notice, but I know it was a few officers. The parking is on hold as of right now. We operate under, you meet our expectations and we talk about privileges and that kind of thing. So we're going to need to do a little bit more of meeting expectations before that comes up again.
I think we should auction them up, being an old econ, I'm sure I think we should auction them off, big time fundraiser.
Yeah, and we are the lowest in the CIML when it comes to parking. All the others are at least three times higher. There's a couple that are around a hundred dollars a year to park the vehicle, so.
That's ours right now, five.
The next closest is twenty-five, so. Four times higher, not three times.
Thank you.
And Gary, special ed?
Special ed wants to do.
Next up is SuperDin.
It is, once again, post chiropractic along with IV and a new rotary and a new land as also a partner and some people from their own, from their own clients donated, I can't even tell you how many school supplies we got. But once again, I mean, we got an entire year's worth of supplies for one fifth grade student at boxes of them put together. So this is a wonderful outreach that's, that happens yearly from that group of people. And then also, I was really, I think they, Kathy helped actually with the shoe drive with United Way. And there were like nine hundred pairs of shoes given out. And that's huge. We think about those are children in our community getting shoes for school, because they couldn't necessarily afford them. So wonderful outreach again from our community. In your red folder, you have draft number one from the work that you did Wednesday night last week on board goals. And, and we have actually, so that you can compare them, I have two. I think, you know, I was reflecting on where we were in 2009 and where the board was. And just in terms of sort of identifying all of those places and the learning that you were starting to do in 2009 and what we, where you've been, what you've read about, what you've learned about, how we crafted board meetings and planning sessions so that you were learning from the teachers in terms of what they were doing and we're trying to put as much of that as much of you possibly could. And then kind of getting to our ability to be more succinct. So I kind of, based on the notes that I had, this is kind of what I've put together. Number one was community and family investments and partnerships. And then learning climate and environment. Number three was instructional leadership and student learning, professional capacity and growth. And then I divided that piece of their professional learning supports, which was, you know, making sure we have professional development facilitators and industry leadership, community education data, instructional data team coaches. And there may be some other things that we would add there, but then also focusing on the learning areas around the Iowa corporate, common core alignment, the PK-12 data teamwork that will be going on in the next three to five years. Formative assessments, go teaching and positive behavior and support, A-aid. And then the last one I put is stewardship and advocacy. I kind of moved up the instructional leadership piece. Instead of having it be number five, I moved it up to be number three. You could have it in any order that you want, but I kind of followed the same order. And then I was talking to Kathy and she said, no, we're not going to move that up. Any comments on what you see there, changes you'd like us to make? Capture what we talked about.
It puts, not an action item, but we can formally add this as our official board goals.
It'll be on the next one, it's an action item. And if you have any comments of things, please send that to me. That's right, take it and prepare your notes, if there are things that we need to change. Well, and if you want, if you still want to have some of those things listed under there, just tell me. That's not, that's not a big deal. I just chose not to put those things there this time, to see if it makes sense. But I just thought about the whole goal setting process this time, it's very different. For you, more. The site visit information, we did get, you know, we did have some things that were, like our technical education that we had to fix. And so about a week and a half ago, maybe, maybe just a while ago, Eric Heidt sent me like six emails all in a row that said, your compliance plan and action has been approved. And so now, you know, we're working on, and most of those things have already been addressed already. Because they were such literally smaller things for us to work on. So we're in good shape, but there is another process that he had to go through to let us know that. Our action plan that we presented in each of our areas has been, so that's what I wanted to bring you today. And then we have a copy of the update in, I mean, Flash Drive, I think. And I would just say that I would say, that I would echo what TJ and Mike said about the beginning of the year. You couldn't have asked for a better beginning. You know, with all of the things that we had built on, all of the people moving, all of the construction. I mean, there's hundreds of moving parts in a district this size. And then if you compile that with construction projects and having people in different places, it really has spawned various movement. I've had a lot of comments from people in the community thanking us for starting more lately. And I know that that's a, that's a topic that we probably want to talk about at some point in time again. I'm going to the Instructional Time Task Force, which they proposed that this will be our last meeting. And I don't know against today, if that will really happen against. Today, actually, we got a, an email from Mike Formack, who's still leading from the EE, indicating that somebody had sent him a six-term calendar. And which was one that I had not seen before, but it was very interesting on how, you know, some fashion of school calendar. I also sought input from super attendants in the AEA and said, you know, what do you think? And thank you for those who were able to also send me your thoughts for the community funds. I think that the majority of people believe that the school start date should just sort of be, it has to be your local control. sort of be, it has to be your local control. And the majority of people are saying that. And it's because each of you feels a little bit different in how it has to work with and around the community needs. So I don't know where it's going to land, but I would guess we have, it'll be an interesting conversation tomorrow. We'll only stay until about one tomorrow because I need to come back to be here for the leadership meeting and then students have activities after school as well. So we'll be there for the majority of the group tomorrow, so.